All right, good morning everybody. We'll call the meeting of the County Board of Commissioners to order. Today is Tuesday, December second is nine AM. We'll begin with Fudge Allegiance. We'll have Commissioner Johnson.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the following religious stands, organization, under God, in the name of our religion and justice for all.
Any questions? Reminder, please silence your cell phones this time so maybe you don't disrupt the meeting this morning. You don't forget to turn them back on. Call for public comments, maybe send it in person or by telephone. At six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or by calling six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. That on the item number three, conflict of interest items, Commissioner.
No.
No. Seeing none, we'll move on to item number four. This is action to approve the December second agenda. Of a motion.
Don't move.
Motion by Schwer, second by Gable. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five is action to approve the November twenty fifth minutes. Don't move.
Second.
Moved by Johnson, second by Mappleton. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is the time and the place for a public hearing and action to approve formal supplements to the rural access infrastructure budget. Do you mind that?
We're going to open the public hearing.
Okay. We'll open up the public hearing at this time. Is there anybody here to give comments on that? Once again, is there anybody here to give public comments on that? Rural access infrastructure budget. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Randy, do you have any more on that?
Yeah, so what the issue is, is we have the cash. Um, it is just that I did not anticipate that many projects were going to get done in the budget and so we are just simply supplementing the budget and in the amount of five hundred and five thousand dollars, we're going to move into that budget so that we will balance this and help funding it. It just stays in there, so it will carry over for next year as well.
Definitely a question, but it's going to be a separate fund that the requirement of public hearing is a legal requirement.
Mm-hmm.
So, so it's kept to some folks know it's a separate fund from our uh, or is it, is it, is it in the federal county budget or is it separate from?
It's a separate, it's in two ninety-five. Yep, it's not my general.
Just care for plenty.
Question, you calling that out of the general fund then?
No, it's in a separate fund.
Oh.
It's out of, it's in its own two ninety-five fund.
Yeah. Hold to approve.
Second by Johnson, second by Mappleton. For approval on that item? Any discussion? Any more discussion?
I did budget more for next year, knowing what we have and what probably I have in projects that are left to do, so.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to bumper reports and we'll get Jody up here for each education. Morning, Jody.
All right, well. Um, Cloverbug today again in Florence, so there's both ways. Um, we have fifty-two Cloverbugs so far. Uh, members who are still enrolling and re-enrolling, hopefully they can get that done for the new year. Um, shooting sports registration has been open for archery, BB gun, air pistol and rifles. Um, some of those programs will start in January twenty twenty-six. We do have the air pistol and air rifle that will begin in December for four meetings in December here, but some shifts are already full. It's a very popular sport that we have in County County four H. Um, we do have displays at let me see if I can hold on. We have displays at Wyomage for Wonderland, which that picture was taken when we set it up. It probably was snow around it. We my husband had buildings I got blown over in that dorm too, so I'm right next to the four H. So that is open Friday, Saturday and Sunday from six to nine through December twenty-first. And then we were fortunate to get a tree at the Wyomage Community Foundation. That's kind of a giant, so you never know if you're going to get to get one there at Wyomage Community Library. So that is a fundraiser worth a dollar per vote. So then, um, Wyomage Community Foundation will match up to three hundred dollars of those votes, um, with the tree at the library too, um. And then, um, we're getting, both of us preparing for a work on our form show, which will be here on the fast time five. So, um, um, or November when it's so, um, so that'll be coming up shortly also. We'll have a cap so I have to any questions?
It's a nice looking Christmas tree.
I had a couple team leaders help us decorate it well, but really quickly, so.
I think everybody should go out and hope for that four H tree.
Yeah.
Well, yes.
And then do you want to do number eight or not yet or maybe even that?
Yeah, go ahead and take that since you're up there. Move on to item number eight, action to authorize the chair to sign an M O D between S D S U and Cottontown County for the provision of items relating to four H here in Cottontown County.
I did review the agreement and it will say it's it's bad or whatever. And with that, I would move that the you could apply that.
So, it's a matter of housekeeping generally, so motion by Johnson, second by Mappleton. Any further discussion?
The only question that I have is the chair to sign it or do I have to weigh about?
You said chair.
Well, we've been in the past, we've had a chair signed.
That can be good. Thank you.
That says chairperson. I would assume that in that motion that that the chair. Okay. Thank you. Uh, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Jody.
If that someone say aye. Move on to Jay Roberts with, uh, Veteran Service. Good morning, Jay.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning, yeah.
So. The update for the Veteran Service Office. This, this last month, we are currently at one hundred and forty open claims. We have fifty-eight pending action from the V A and three hundred and thirty-eight have been completed for the year. For Hamlet County, we have eighteen open claims, ten pending action and nineteen have been completed for the year. And we're currently working, uh, fourteen veterans outside of our county. That number is slowly reducing as I turn people back to their counties and it's an ongoing process, but with that, I'll skip down to another note. Eric has now been approved to go ahead and submit claims
Right.
to the, to the V A, which is awesome.
Yeah.
So we're up to be able to both work and submit claims, but he does not have the power as of yet to view claims at the V A level. So he can't continually track who he has submitted, so that's all on me. So I go back to the point of asking people to go back to their clients, you know, we don't necessarily want to turn a veteran away that comes through the door, but until that gets resolved, which is moving along quite well, uh, the V A is right now looking at if they can use his security clearance from working with the Department of Energy, they think they may not have to do it again. So we should have a move forward hopefully within a month.
Yes.
So, right now, over the last month, we have seven thousand one hundred and seventeen of an increase for this last month for a total for the year of one hundred and fifty-three thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars of the monthly increases and then retro payments in this last month, we had twenty thousand five hundred and one dollars up and for the year, we're looking at one million five hundred and nine dollars and nine, nine hundred and six dollars, excuse me. So, um, we're doing very well.
Sorry, can you say that again? One million five hundred and nine thousand seven hundred and six?
Nine hundred and six.
Nine hundred and six, so correct. Thank you.
So we have four veterans that were transported to the V A for healthcare appointments this last month, and we have two currently scheduled for the next for this month and, uh, we're still at five drivers. So we're doing well there.
Uh, Jay, this was I, uh, learned that you have a bad, the event has to be, uh, disabled for a lot of this, all these other they have to have in order for them to get the free ride to Paul.
They just need to be enrolled into the V A healthcare and have a V A approved appointment.
So there's no, no degree of, of disability.
No.
Okay, good. I appreciate that. I had that question asked and I, I didn't know the answer.
It differs from the, the system that the V A has at that clinic here in town, which is called Veterans Transportation System. And they must be thirty percent or higher.
Probably what they were confused with, but.
So then, uh, how often are we running? How often do we make those trips happening for?
It, it ranges. It just depends on the individuals that call in and ask for rides. It's typically about four, four to five.
Times a week, a month?
A month.
Okay.
So not, not too long.
Yeah, okay.
A great service though.
It is.
It is.
Uh, let's see here, last, this last month, we had the Veterans Appreciation Event out at Joy Ranch. It went very well. Uh, the Veterans Secretary, Veterans Affairs for the State was there to speak, did a very nice job and and the attendance was up just slightly from last year. It, it seems like we can't get like a bigger number to come, but I think it's good. It comes in small increases over the years. Um, there's also a, a large event that was held on the same day up in Dayton County. And so they have a pretty big draw to that and that they have. And they, they have a meal, they, 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 they hand out quilts.
Probably not so weather related either.
No, it wasn't. It wasn't, you know, like, like we thought it might be, but the people from Sioux Albor, they'll make it up that day. And so it went over well. Um, so future tonight, we have a, I have a Veterans Cottontown Veterans Council meeting tonight. And then on Thursday, excuse me, I'll be on the radio both at eight thirty and at nine at K X L D K one. And then on the tenth of January, the G F and P is holding an event out at Pelican Lake. It's called Veterans Rod Building Class. And it's by, uh, by, um, reservationally, you might say, you have to call in and say, yep, I'm a veteran. I'd like to participate in this event. And currently they only have four spots left. And so I'll be publicizing that on the radio, but, um, people can call Cass Vankey and at the G F and P and they can get signed up for that. But there's only four slots left and I'll be attending that as well. And that's it for the month.
I'd like to make a comment, Jack, in reference to the Veterans Day, uh, program, and I know that you had played a part in it. Uh, I, I say, I was very, very pleased with the young people that were in attendance, well behaved. And I got some feedback from my high school and they were all kind of sick on tins of needles, wondering how they would behave and and they had no issues at all. And it went very well, I thought.
Yep, Eric's son is, is a high school student and came home and was impressed with, with the program that was put on and enjoyed the speakers that were there. And I heard from my daughter, who's a teacher as well at high school, and she said she was very captivated by their, their speech as well.
Yeah, and I heard from the administration that, so it was very well done. The, the highlight of the program was when the gentleman played the taps at the end and the, he said, he said, they, and he said the two guys played taps and he was the elderly gentleman and blessed his party. I thought, where is he going to get the wind to blow that way? And all he needed to do was get his plug on tight enough so he could push the button inside that one.
That plays for him.
Played for him. That was good. That was great.
Seafre, you're not supposed to know that.
That's right.
It was good. Awesome.
Thank you. Okay, I have one more item.
Okay.
Uh, then item number nine.
Item number nine. Any questions about the report before he's age number nine? All right, let's do number nine, action to declare an H P code gas computer surplus to be destroyed in the vet's office.
Yes, can no longer hold any updates for Windows.
Motion by Gable, second by Schwer, that happens.
Yeah.
Um, any discussion?
I'm assuming you've already replaced it.
We have, yes, when Eric came on board as a new V A, so we purchased a laptop at that point.
That'll become with anger.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Yeah, you too. Let's move down to seven C. This is Andrew Delgado with Emergency Management. His monthly report. Morning, Andrew. Morning. Morning.
Yeah, some of the things we've been working on, uh, region coordinator came in to do the local, local capability assessment for readiness, so how far it's like a fourteen page questionnaire and asking what activities we, uh, do like throughout the year and give them a good idea of where we're at. Uh, so we completed that. Um, we did a refresher for the like D O T, um, route closures, um, for winter weather, um, along with Sheriff's Office. Um, that was in several counties, um, over the last week or so, um, so they were able to identify some some issues that they're having in their third priority, not to be built now with the summer mode, but, um, I can give that overall going to be really good as far as, you know, like having people like once the interstate closes, like not getting rerouted, you know, on our county roads and so forth, when they're trying to to get places and to be weathering. Uh, communication bureau, uh, drop off cups and pillows and blankets, um, south shore. Continuing with, with that, um, try some coordination, like I coordinated with Gavin Waverly a little bit, we haven't, uh, met up yet to drop those ones off, but, uh, we're getting close to getting those all, um, distributed out. Safety conference, uh, we also had another blood planning meeting with some of the, the key players and, and that's role. I mean, we're all feeling significantly better, but we don't want to be, uh, complacent. I mean, because there are still, you know, there is still decent potential for, for issues. So I mean, we want to make sure that we especially have the resources that we need, uh, for when the next flood, uh, happens. Trying to get a few updates in the conference room, which is where like Sherry and I do a lot of the weather related, um, monitoring. Also. Kind of got a new table dish in there that, um, change heights and stuff like that. So we're, you know, I'm sitting there. Sit down and then a new monitor in there as well, um. Went on a call with search and rescue for a vehicle, um, that was submerged and then, uh, actually the same day there was a, a call out for headlamp release and a slew. Trump hearing, so many were, uh, went into it. Coordinated with, uh, state on that. But any questions? Uh, that's what I have, please.
Just a quick comment about the first call out that day. Uh, that was a vehicle that went into the slew provided the monastery. Uh, female was trapped inside the vehicle and search and rescue responded and was able to, to get her out, get her out on, on the shore and, uh, it's definitely a, a very difficult call for all the responders that were involved. There was a debriefing that was held. And I know that search and rescue attended that. Um, and I think that was beneficial, at least talking to my staff was beneficial. And so, um, word, uh, just out to DJ and his crew at search and rescue, thank you for putting the job that you did. It was difficult. And, uh, they did a, a good job of responding, getting on the scene and getting out of the vehicle. So it didn't turn out like we hoped, but, um, they were able to get her out. So thank you, search and rescue.
Thank you.
Any questions for Andrew? No? Okay, thank you. Please pass that on to the rest of the team as well. All right, let's move on to item number ten, and this is action to authorize the chair to sign a right of way certificate for bridge number fifteen dash one fifty-seven dash zero two five. And
Good morning.
Martin.
Morning.
Fifteen dash one fifty-seven zero one five.
I did bring Martin down here from Banner Associates with me to answer a question that I may not be able to with the next several items we have to deal with here.
Well, you won't be so hard on you, but I see that someone had a seventeen page, not the one, you, you heard that, didn't you?
No.
Wait.
Fire again a few questions.
Uh, okay, first one is for, um, the whole certification for bridge fifteen dash one five seven dash zero two five. That is a bridge on Cottonwood Street and north west corner of the county. Um, we're requesting completely silenced right away. Um, what it does is it states the temporary construction units have been required and have been obtained according to provisions for uniform medication systems. We're a profit. This includes, um, certified any improvements that need to be made, whether it's utilities, expenses, et cetera, will be taken care of.
Will they take these in the daylight?
Yeah, okay, so.
No, no.
Approved. Second, approved by Commissioner, uh, Johnson, second by Mappleton. Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Right, let's move on to the second one, which is action to authorize the chair to sign the utility certificate for bridge fifteen dash one fifty-seven dash oh two five.
Again, this is for the same bridge on Cottonwood Street, you know, northwest corner of the county. And this is just states that utilities hadn't notified, um, if there was any in the area, in this case there were none. So we have no preparation we have to make, but we did notify both Cottontown Park Electric and I T C.
Hold to approve.
Uh, pick a motion by Mappleton and a second by Johnson on that. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item number twelve is action to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two, authorizing an application for the bridge improvement grant funds for that same bridge fifteen dash one fifty-seven dash oh two five.
Hold to approve.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Mappleton. Any discussion? Uh, Randy, do you want to give us an explanation?
What we're looking for here is with this big grant, um, and the way that Mark explained it to you is obviously we're in competition with all the counties to go to the state for funding for the state program. Um, with Mark and his engineering firm getting the, getting this bid ready reviewed plan set up that gives us endpoints towards not getting this big grant. So that is a large step up. The only determination is going to give us a better point system is if we opt to pay more than twenty percent of this profit. Normally it's a share between the state that we twenty split between us and the state. If we opt to put in more money, that'll give us a better point counts, giving us a better chance of being able to spit grants together. So Mark did lay out some options for us, uh, percentage wise, um, if we do opt to put in a little higher amount. Again, giving us a little better system. There's only fifteen million dollars throughout the entire states. Last year they put in, uh, twenty-two million dollars worth of estimated profits. So we're fighting other counties for this money. So it's an option to care to up that ante to a higher percentage, again, giving us a better points level value. Yeah, so what, what, uh, what budget year would this affect? This would affect twenty twenty-seven. So I have Matty at lucky for this. Take a recommendation instead. We'll share percentage. Best case scenario would be fifty percent, but I hardly don't want to bother you for that. Um, you're looking at a quarter percent, saying it put us up to about in thirty percent range, we're talking about six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So that would be two hundred and twenty thousand above our twenty percent level. And that would bring us up to about fifty-six percent of big story roughly. So the, on the, on the resolution that commission signing today, this, this yellow box, the commission does need to sign the percent match.
Today.
Today. Part of talking about.
I mean, motion, motion.
So, so in fact, this was, we clearly, what we put in that little top. Yeah.
Yeah. Cottontown County agrees to pay the blank match. So. Um. Right now, we do have a, a motion to approve the resolution, but.
I, I would say I'm going to substitute motion to take the thirty percent.
Thirty percent?
So.
We have substituted motion for, um, that with a thirty percent match and bridge improvement grant. Go ahead and second, obviously, and then second by Mappleton. Any discussion?
Uh, Jeff.
Commissioner.
It's like that, Mark, if what's is there a history of how high it's a good number that they've been getting awarded these?
Nope, if you, if you look at your, uh, your sheet here, that, that top box, um, those scores highlighted in yellows are the minimum score needed to get a grant that particular year. So in twenty twenty-five, you needed fifty point four two points. In twenty twenty-four, you needed fifty point six. I, I do see those scores probably trending upwards as time goes on, because there's, right now, there's only fifteen million dollars typical. In that pot, in twenty twenty-five, there was fifty-five million dollars worth of applications sent in, so. The need is greater than the amount of funding available with, and with that, for, for some, where is that, please, for both? Uh, if, if the commission decides to do thirty percent, that gives you fifty-six point two five points, although I see.
So we can back that down a little bit.
But we don't know what everybody, this sounds like it's going to be a bit more, but if you need a bridge replaced and we know we have bridges that need replacing, it seems to me that that's maybe off the only avenue. If you're really wanting to make progress, you're going to have to bid.
All right, buying and transplanting.
More or less. And that's why I said if we can stay in that fifty-six percent area, so I'm looking at the highest rate in twenty eighteen, it was at fifty-seven point nine percent. So I hope we keep that point level in, in that facility. I think we, hopefully be in good shape.
All right, so we do have a motion and a second on that. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. If that's probably not a bad idea. Thank you. Let's move on to item number thirteen. This is action to approve signing a contract with Banner Engineering for engineering services for that, uh, no, for different bridge. Fifteen dash two fifteen dash two three zero.
Uh, yes, uh, proposal you have in front of you is for a break on one hundred and seventy-seven C in this southern part of the county over the Big Sea River. Um, it's the same price we gave for the doing bid ready plans. We give you ten points on the, the bridge you just approved sending application in for. Um, the only different caveat on this bridge, I would propose that, uh, we try to get the uh, landowner agreement upfront on this project. So we don't want to spend a bunch of design money and then can't get the agreement from the landowner, you know? I think that would be a good idea on this project.
Have we talked with the landowner at all on that?
Uh, yes, we've, uh, not with both landowners, but.
I think that was to do approve. But, I'm sorry.
Would you have a motion to approve this, uh, agreement with Banner? Uh, from Commissioner Mappleton, would you have a second by Gable? The amount looking at this is not to exceed a hundred and eighty-nine thousand?
Correct, that would be the max speed.
Okay.
I don't anticipate reaching that, but that, that would be the limit.
Okay. All right, measures, any other questions? Doc, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number fourteen is action to approve signing a contract with Banner Engineering for engine cert, uh, engineering services on bridge fifteen dash two four two dash one forty-five.
Mark? Yes, this proposal is for another set of bid ready plans for a, uh, replacement project on Oak Street over Willow Creek. Um, this kind of, it's going to be a box cover. Straight forward, the max, max speed on this project would be seventy-five thousand dollars.
I got motion to approve by Gable, second by Mappleton. Any discussion? Is there any chance we could get a two for one bill?
Even one, but.
Probably not.
We'll, uh, we'll only get billed for the hours that are put in, but not.
Hey, could you tell me just where is that at?
This bridge is over Willow, Willow Creek, just as you come off of probably road ten, seven, or eight or six, coming up two twelve north, where we have our hall pits up there, just around the corner.
Okay, yep.
You're a lot of practice on that.
Yes.
Yeah. Necessary. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There you go. All right, uh, since we have Randy up here, let's take item number fifteen. This is action to approve purchase of a new truck. At a highway shop.
Yes, this is for a pickup truck. This is actually for our twenty twenty-six budget. But we want to get it ordered now and put away delivery times. It could potentially be late February, early March. And we have some budgeting for it. I've got three estimates. Two locals and one from out of town in Kier. Two for Chevys, one for Sharks here in town. For a three-quarter ton Chevy crew cab at fifty-three thousand nine hundred eighty-nine dollars. We went to Watertown Ford for again, we had three-quarters ton crew cab at fifty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. And I got a bid from Beck Motors out of Kier, South Dakota. For a Chevy three-quarter ton crew cab for forty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. This is a source well bid. Uh, so there's a difference of five thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars, which was at the next floor of it. So I'd like to go with Beck Motors Chevrolet.
Second.
Motion by Gable, second by Mattel. Any discussion?
I was, I still local, but.
Yes.
Great, great. In fact, we should go to those, that, then we're such a good six.
I agree, I think that's important to point that out, that we like to stay as local as we can all the time to help out our local folks. We also have to be responsible of our tax side, this is one of the, all right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, action to approve a court to have sewer pipes at County Highway Shop cleaned and lined.
Yes. Late last week, we had an issue with some fumes. Um, in our sewer system, so we went and flushed the system, only to find out that once we brought in natural. Plumber, then we had a crack in one of our pipes, lead to the main drain. So we brought in Midwest Pipeline, who is local here in town. Uh, they again set a camera down just to verify that there was a crack and a lot of deterioration with this gas side pipe that we had, ran in the nineteen sixty-two building. So they said that it needs to be sleeved. What they'll do is they'll actually go in and they will clean the pipe itself prior to putting a polymer sleeve into this sewer line. And their, uh, estimate came in at thirteen thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars. This is a partial project. They cannot do a vertical going up to the roof yet. They would have to do that next spring, but this would give us the majority of our issue solved for this particular season.
You had that money left in you, right?
Yes.
Beautiful, moved it through.
Motion by Mattel, second by Gable.
Thanks.
Any, uh, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Get that done.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you, Randy.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Number seventeen is discussion possible action authorized community service office to apply for Department of Health overdose date to action. State's Community Health Worker Program in the amount of forty thousand dollars.
Sure.
They say that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Tell us about it.
So this is the same grant that we currently have. It's just a renewal for this year through the Department of Health using opioid funds. Um, for next year, currently this year, they are, um, we're eligible for fifteen thousand dollars per community health worker. Next year, they're increasing it to twenty thousand dollars per community health worker. So those are basically reimbursement, community health workers. Um, it's for clients that are not eligible for Medicaid that have substance use disorder or, or are at risk of, well, opioid use specifically. These are using opioid, this is one of the ways state has designated to use the opioid funds that are coming through.
Both approve.
Second by Johnson, second by Gable. Discussion.
So, Mattel, you said this is, this actual, this funding will be for next year, twenty twenty-six?
Yes, so this grant will start in June. Of next year, but the application is due.
Yeah, Gable?
No, she's gonna, so just so we're clear that it's not our local group, opioid funds, it's our federal system.
Right, yeah, yeah, this is the state.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We like those funds.
Yeah.
Um, number eighteen is discussion possible action authorized community service office. Excuse me. To apply for state opioid funds for a community awareness campaign in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
So this is another use of the opioid funds that are coming through to the state. Um, they have changed the allocation, um, the way the state is allocating opioid funds. One of the options is that communities can apply for up to fifty thousand dollars for a community investment opioid fund. And our opioid task force, along with our community awareness group, have, um. Identified that we would like to create a community awareness campaign to, um, address. Using and supporting people, um, creating some different community norms around, you know, substance use.
Both approve.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Mattel. Is it game?
Just, this, so this, um, you know, I, I was able to, this is just, it's all. The package, I can ready to go, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, any further discussion? Community awareness campaign, it seems like a good, good way to spend those dollars, you sure? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, have a good day.
Two, nineteen is discussion possible action authorized the auditor to enter into a combined election agreement with the Watertown School District. Right?
Okay, so legislature made subtle changes this year, uh, it stays in there. We are, cities and the schools are either to combine or be in conjunction, so. That still is open for discussion, but, uh, since typically in the past. We, the county has helped the city and the school, um. With their elections and, and, and their ballots, so. This has been a process, um, you, Lincoln County, uh, they have done agreements in the past. And the city of Watertown and Watertown School District have had agreements in the past, so. We put this together. And, um, I guess this is the first one that the county has ever had, and so it will be a work in process. But I did share it with Allison, and she hasn't noticed anything that, you know, jumped out at her. She seemed to, to think it looked fine. And so, um, just looking for your approval for me to sign this, and, uh, we'll just see how it goes. I, I'm happy with it. I. We'll have a good working relationship. We've had some good conversations I have with Heidi, and so. Um, I think it will be, will be good.
Both approve.
Exactly. Motion by Johnson, second by Mattel, I believe. Um, any further discussion for the commission Gable?
So, uh, right, I'm much more worried this kind of over for the auditor's office, or is it just kind of the final result?
Yes, it will, because when they certify their candidates. And turn them over to me, that totally becomes my election then for the auditor's office, so. I will create all the ballots, do all the publications, absentee voting will all be done up here. Uh, we will continue to do a rural ballot, so they will help with a rural table for those, those overlapping school districts, so that they get questions. So they will help with that. Uh, they have been good. I said, you know, like, in the one we run with. If they can help come over and help check that, file those absentee ballots, and. They'll try to help out wherever they can, so.
And I heard their discussion, Randy mentioned that the only one candidate this year, school board, this year, good year, can you give it a drive up?
Yes, exactly, which is being the first time that this is going to happen. Uh, and the city is going to leave theirs on the odd years, and they'll, they will hold theirs in the general. Which is a better choice, because then as the county, we have one ballot, so that will be much simpler, although our wars and commissioner gifts don't match up, but. Uh, this will create a little, uh, you know, there'll be a lot of ballot styles in, in this situation, but. It is nice if there is only one candidate.
I think some of it is something like a real, a straightforward for voting, as far as where they go, the vote, especially in the rural absentee.
Correct, wow.
So I think.
So, yes, the way it is set up right now, and Heidi will be in charge of that, because the school district basically decided. They will leave this the same. This was my decision for the overlapping, so those will be the, the individuals who live in Dual County, Grant County, and Hamon County. Those. Those individuals will be voting in Cottonington County for the Watertown School District candidates. Just like they have in the past, who will have that rural ballot, so they would come up, if they want to do absentee voting, they'll come up here, and on election day, they will go. We'll have a table at extension office for that. So. They've decided to leave it the same, so, and those, um, auditors, I know two for sure were fine with that. There, it doesn't affect a lot of voters. With overlapping in this instance, but we'll see how it goes, I guess, the first time. I don't know what will happen, you know, if there is, um. A candidate for the Castlewood School District, because I do have individuals who live in South transfer who are in, in the Castlewood School District. So that could be interesting too. I mean, I have individuals in, um, Cottonington County who go to other school districts, so. And that hasn't been determined by those other counties yet.
Okay.
So.
Well, this has been reviewed by our state's attorney. She did not have an issue.
Nope, she didn't have.
So, we have a motion to second, I know the level we're at.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number twenty is discussion possible action for the auditor's office to purchase ballot on-demand election equipment, so we can. Have those elections.
So, uh, this I'm going to put off. I, I wanted you to have information. The reason being, there's more information I want to gather, but, um. Legislature also did not. I don't know what the correct terminology is, Secretary State tried to get them to change deadlines and such forth. The deadline to file a petition for candidates is March thirty-first this year. Absentee voting starts on April seventeenth. There's Easter in there. That gives us ten days to certify candidates. Plus then you have registered mail. That's not like certified, certified mail. Registered mail is a whole nother animal. Those individuals can still send it registered mail on that last day. That fits in. They have to certify that. And so creating ballots and then checking all that over, getting your orders into E S and S, getting your ballots printed, it's a very short timeline. So if we don't have ballots on hand on election day, what do you do? That's where this, uh, ballot on demand. It is a system that will print actual ballots in-house. That I could have ballots in-house for individuals when they come to vote. Uh, but I am looking into some information. If there's other, if there's funding available and such forth, and I do want E S and S to be online, that if you guys would have some questions, and they can explain it out of the night, because it is their system. It is approved and certified by Secretary of State, so this is a system that, that would be approved, but. I will have more information going forward, and I do have money in the election budget to cover it, but anyway. More to come.
Okay, so we will not be taking action.
No, not today.
All right, number twenty-one is action to approve commissioner contingency transfers.
Yes, we have a couple of those today. We will have more to come. And I know we will have a formal budget hearing, and I will talk about that when we get down to, uh, the board meetings as we go forward. The two today is. The court-appointed attorney in the amount of one hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred thirty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents. That will balance that budget currently. The other one is catastrophic legal, and that's because they changed, the state changed your amount. And that amount is sixteen thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars. But currently, in your commissioner contingency, you have two hundred and fifty-three thousand seven hundred forty-four dollars and eighty-one cents. Once you take these two amounts out, your remaining amount in commissioner contingency, thirty-seven thousand three hundred eighty-six dollars and four cents.
A white dollar.
So, yes, I know we will need to do a formal budget hearing on court-appointed attorney. I'll have those, um. Publications ready. We'll decide, you know, when you want to meet. Um, anyway, well, this is what it is for today, under ninety-nine, nine thirty-six, seventy-seven for court-appointed attorney, and then sixteen four twenty-two for catastrophic legal.
Motion to approve, sorry.
Motion by Mattel, and a second by Gable. Any further discussion?
Uh, as far as a budget hearing, so that, we have to do that this month, right, so.
Yeah, so all the budgets have to balance.
So we're looking for two weeks now.
So that's the thing, so the thirtieth is, is the fifth Tuesday, and ideally, it is nice if you meet that fifth Tuesday, so we can pay any last-minute bills in December.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so that way we can make sure everybody's budgets are balanced, move any money out of commissioner contingency, have any. I'll have formal budget hearings sent for that day. Everything will get wrapped up. Yeah.
I think we should meet that day, coming up for books for the year, and anybody have an issue about? That. We're planning on, after this, we'll throw.
Yes, that I will, sure. We'll have that formal budget hearing also, everything, okay.
Yeah, we didn't vote yet, did we, on that? So let's go ahead and vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's know Christmas and New Year's office closures.
Okay, so. According to what the governor had noted as administrative, the, um, for holiday closure, the, um, county offices. And the courthouse will be closed Wednesday, December twenty-fourth. Thursday, obviously, December twenty-fifth, and Friday, December twenty-sixth. And then we will be closed again Thursday, January first, twenty twenty-sixth. So we're closed Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth. And then that Thursday, yep, or the Thursday, on the first, twenty twenty-sixth.
Action to approve Bateman applicants.
Today.
Action to approve.
No, and not twenty-four, twenty-six, or twenty-seven.
Personnel changes, travel requests, nothing. Twenty-eight public notices. A possible quorum of commissioners could be in attendance at this week.
Okay, here we go. What is that? The, um, one of the public reports.
Oh.
To like people. Watch it though.
All right, nothing. Let's move on to old business, number twenty-nine. Old business. Nothing. Number thirty's new business. Everybody have anything for new business? Going down to the open, number thirty-one, public comments. Anything for public comments? Anything for commissioner comments?
About the attack in, uh, jail. All right.
All right, number thirty-two, we do have a need to go into executive session for the purposes of, uh, contract negotiations. That would be section three. I'll look for motion going to that. No, no, back here by Johnson, second by Schwer. Any further discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.